I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands alone, nation and God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our September 4th meeting. It's good to see a lot of people here. That's not always the case. Please note the council's in full attendance this evening. We'll start off with items from council. I know we have one proclamation. We can, I guess we could do that right away. And then if anyone has anything else, we'll, we'll start over again on the items from council. Go ahead and read that proclamation for us tonight.
I have something to say first, Kenneth.
Oh, absolutely.
On behalf of my family, I'm going to start to cry, but anyway. I'd like to thank everybody that showed up for my son's funeral, for all the flowers, the food, the words of comfort that everybody has given me and my family. I want to thank the chief and the farm chief and everybody, all the department heads. Everybody was so consoling and it gives me a lot of peace that we had so many people that came and spent time with us, either at the house, at the funeral home, at the church. I will miss him dearly. I really do. But I know he's in a better place and I thank him for bringing me here to represent him because I took his place. I just hope I'm doing a good job so that he can be proud of me too. And I love you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Leece. Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and continue with our MDA Fill the Boots Days, which is coming up. We have a proclamation.
This is a proclamation for MDA Fill the Boots Days and it is signed by the mayor and it reads in part, whereas the Victoria Professional Firefighters Local 3679 is a prime example of public service and sacrifice, displaying the nobility to protect the citizens of our community every day. And whereas the Victoria Professional Firefighters Local 3679 members selflessly contribute their time and energy fighting for kids and adults with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscle and strength mobility by filling the boot each year for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. And whereas, in the past five years, the Victoria Professional Firefighters Local 3679 has raised more than $95,000 for MDA through the annual Fill the Boot campaign. Now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do officially proclaim September 1st and September 15th as Victoria Professional Firefighters Local 3679 MDA Fill the Boot Days in Victoria, Texas. And it is signed this day by the mayor, Paul Palosik.
Okay. So that event is this weekend, is that correct? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're still under items from council.
Mayor, if I may, staff would like to pull item D9 off of the consent agenda. There is no need to address that item tonight.
Okay. Okay, very good. So before we open citizens' communication, just a little, so everybody knows what's going on. We do have three public hearings additionally. We'll do the citizens' communication and then we'll do each public hearing separately, one on the tax rate, one on the budget, and one is another budget amendment. But, so there's two times to talk. The others will be very specific to the topic. But under citizens' communication, obviously, most of you, I think, have been here before. You can talk about whatever. Is there anything before we proceed? Anything from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll close. Items from council, move into citizens' communication. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about anything at all, now's the time. We just ask as a courtesy, you limit your remarks to five minutes. I think this gentleman knows that, so. Just your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Will Martin. Mayor and distinguished members of Victoria City Council, it's a huge honor to come before you this evening to share an issue that is very disturbing to a lot of the population of Victoria. And that issue is the illegal game rooms in the city of Victoria that seem to operate with impunity. I'm going to try to follow this, what I have written here, but I want to inject at this time that everything I'm going to tell you is the truth. There is nothing made up. I have a lot of expertise. If you want to ask me about it later, that's good. But I can tell you, everything that I'm going to tell you is fact. Let me begin by saying I was raised in Victoria and always been very proud of Victoria. Now I do quite a bit of traveling, Dallas, Houston, Austin, Corpus, San Antonio, Huntsville, Conroe, and all over the Rio Grande Valley. When I talk to people and tell them I'm from Victoria, they do not say, "Oh, y'all have a beautiful lake on each side of Victoria," or "Y'all are only 25 miles from Lavaca Bay." They don't mention Boot Fest or Warriors Weekend. They say, "Oh, you're from down there where they have all those sleazy game rooms." The Chamber of Commerce spends a lot of money trying to attract tourists, commerce, and industry here, but we are known for our sleazy game rooms. Let's talk about these illicit game rooms for a minute. I have heard that there are between 25 to 60 game rooms in this city. Myself, I like to always use low numbers, so here we go. If you have 25 game rooms that take in $30,000, and according to our district attorney, the district attorney says that is a low number. They take in $30,000 per week. That each comes out to $750,000 a week and $39 million per year in total. These game rooms have been investigated and law enforcement will tell you that it is all organized crime. The drug cartels use them to not only make money, but also launder their drug money. We had a gentleman from Dallas that came to Victoria and testified in front of your city manager and police chief that there were also fronts for human smuggling and prostitution rings. We also have great concerns regarding y'all placing a moratorium on new game rooms. Keep in mind, these people are criminals. They do not think that a moratorium means squat to them. That's akin to putting a moratorium on new drug dealers in town. I had a friend ask me, "How can you tell the difference between a legal game room and an illegal game room?" I told him, "That's easy. A legal game room that only gives away toilet paper and canned goods will only be in business for three or four days." While we're on the subject of drug cartels, human smugglers, and all other immoral people, let us not forget the individuals of Victoria that are accommodating these game rooms by renting or leasing their buildings to them. For money, they are willing to bring this type of assorted and sleazy activity to Victoria. Make no mistake, they know exactly who they are leasing or renting to. So if anyone has a child that develops a drug problem, they have some of these individuals to thank. What can the city council do? Y'all can pass an ordinance that outlaws all illegal electronic games of chance in the city limits of Victoria. And I want to inject at this time, we're not talking about games of skill like it Peter Piper pizza or Chuck E. Cheese. Y'all know what I'm talking about. In other words, if you have one machine in any type of business, be it a convenience store or a dress shop, then you are in violation of a city ordinance. This craziness with game rooms in Victoria has gone on long enough. I hope this will be the day when the mayor and city council of Victoria will go down in history by saying to the criminals and to the voters of Victoria, Texas, there will be no more, I mean zero, game rooms in our beautiful city. In closing, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And if you have any questions, I will try my best to answer them for you at this time. If no, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Citizens' communication is still open for anyone who'd like to speak about anything at all.
How are you? Good evening. Mayor Palosik. Mr. Alapaska, how y'all doing? My name's Dwayne Bennett. I am too Victoria proud. I am here today because there was a issue, there is an issue in regards to the property that I own at 1111 South Deleon Street. It's come to the attention that I received correspondence from the city that they're saying that it is an unsafe dwelling and you guys want to, it's been recommended that you tear it down. Why does Dwayne Bennett put up a fight for a liberty of house commonly known as up under the hill? Well, that's where I grew up at. I'm too in Victoria proud. Couple of, about two years ago, I reached out to Mr. Young, City Councilman Young. I asked him to look into an issue with lighting down up under the hill. At that time, what I was trying to do, I was trying to adhere to what the city was requiring of me to have a safe and steady property. Let me just kind of fast forward. Mr. McCoy, you're here today and there's been a recommendation that we tear down the property. I'm asking that you grant me 120 days or 180 days to remedy the problem. I'm pretty sure that you had a chance to read over the information that's in your packet. If you have any questions of me, I'll, I'll answer those questions. But the question that I ask of you guys, or whoever, Mr. Madrid, whoever is responsible for going into the dwellings or doing the assessments, did you really exhaustively look at my property? Because if you had exhaustively gone into my property and looked at it, you would have seen for about two years, there was about $5,000 worth of boards. There were shingles. There was 20-foot boards. And before the hurricane came, it didn't even rain inside the house. Yes, the hurricane did come. It, it did cause a part of the house to be damaged. So I lost a lot of wood. Why didn't I say anything about that then? Because I live in Houston, Texas. I'm down here this evening. About a year, year and a half ago, I was in a bad truck accident. My truck was totaled. So it's hard coming to Victoria, Texas on the weekends of trying to work on your property. I was up under doctor's orders. It's all documented. So I couldn't really get down here like I wanted to get down here. Now, at the time, in your report, it talks about me working part-time. But I gladly share with you today that I do have a full-time job now and my intention or is to come down here. But the question is, I can't stand behind a podium and talk. That's not how I do it. So let me just kind of move around a little bit. So what happened was, I came down here, I entered into a contract with a guy and I said, "Listen." I think my timeline was July 23rd, July 24th to have it done by. And so I entered into a contract with the guy, paid him 800 bucks. In essence, what happened to me is I got duped. Basically, I got burned. I paid him $300 up front. Not a lot of money. I'll take one for the team. That's not the story I'm not, I'm trying to tell you here today. But basically what happened was, we went into the store, I paid him the money, I got duped. Since that time, I went over to BPD, I came down here, I talked with T. Michael's department, I filed charges. It's not about little bitty Dwayne Bennett from Victoria, Texas, from up under the hill. My real concern is that if there is someone's grandmother, someone who would not speak up, this guy would do it again. When I went over to BPD and I spoke with the police officer, she said, "This is not the first time this has happened." Well, Dwayne, where did you get the guy from? He was referred to me by a friend. He had done work before. But unfortunately, the guy had fallen upon hard times, seemingly, and to that end, he began to dupe people. I have a minute and 11 seconds left. So my question is to you all, I am very Victoria proud. I ask you today to let me have 180 days to remedy the problem. I welcome comments and feedback from the committee because you reported about me, but I don't know what, how you came to the conclusion. On the day of the activity, I did come to Victoria Riley. I did not snub your committee. I came to, I came down here, but when I went by ordinance, the code ordinance department, it was closed. It was closed from 11 to 3. To no avail, I made phone calls. But my time in Victoria is very limited, so what I had to do is make a decision, right? Leave a letter up under the door explaining your timeline. It was not introduced. Or you can come back and try to remedy it via, via another way. And so that's what I did. I'm going to be quiet for 10 or 15 seconds because I want you to ask me questions because I've given you information, but I would rather hear from you, your concerns of me, so I can make adjustments accordingly and do what I need to do.
We will address this issue later on in the agenda. And I suppose it would be acceptable at that time if staff, after we've heard more information, if council wants to ask you a question, well, we can do it then.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for your service.
Okay, we're still in citizens' communication. If anyone else would like to come forward about anything at all, now would be the time.
Hi. My name is John Swanson. I've been here before. I'm going to tell you a story I hope you find interesting. And, so you can smile. You don't have to frown. After the hurricane, I had a lot of problems with Suddenlink. And many of you may have also had problems with Suddenlink. I tried everything. I'm not going to go through all of the horror stories that I went through. But I hit on something that really worked. I called Mrs. Garrett's office requesting a conference with her and said, "Boy, I'll come down there right away to get, to talk with her." And of course, she was busy doing other things. So I, by golly, everything is working against me with this Suddenlink deal. And do you know, I got a call back the following day from her secretary. And I would like to commend, this secretary is good. She's very, very good. She set up an appointment where I was able to talk to Ms. Garrett. And it, it worked out very, very well. Now, this secretary is good and I'm giving her a lot of credit, but I think you also have to give Mrs. Garrett some credit because she hired the lady. Okay? So, but she was very good to set it up and what she, the most frustrating thing about Suddenlink is there's nobody you can talk to. During the hurricane, they brought people down here. You could go back into the back spot there. They had a command center. I mean, they knew what they were doing. They couldn't talk to the public, but they, they knew what they were doing. Very fine people. So when I got to the person that Mrs. Garrett referred me to, this lady is sharp. She is good. Very, very good. And so I wanted to come down and share with you that some things worked out very well. Not that I'm any happier with Suddenlink, okay? But the, the city responded, I thought, very, very well. I was very happy with that response. And I wanted to let you all know, share that with you, that you've got some good people. I think you know you've got some good people. You've got some good people. The, I, I have a few minutes left. I was going to wait till I had about 10 seconds. And then like in the congressional hearings, I was going to give back the balance of my time or ask you a question and let you all take another five, 10 minutes to answer the question so I get a total of 10 minutes. But I'm not going to do that. The other idea I have, and I appreciate what you guys do. This is a tough time of year. This budget stuff is challenging. If it was easy, I would volunteer to do it, okay? But it's not. It's hard and I appreciate what you all are doing and it's tough. And I wish you the best. And you're not going to do it the way I would do it, which is fine. You're going to do it better. And that's good. That's even better. But my suggestion deals with pedestrians. We've got a problem to consider and, you know, the police have, or the police response has a better approach. That is, you slow down by 10 miles an hour when you see somebody in the street. Okay? That's the idea. You guys can make that an ordinance and it's just required to slow down whether you're passing a policeman walking or you're passing a pedestrian walking, or we've got quite a few people out there on bicycles now. And we just slow down by 10. That does a couple of good things. One of them, it recognizes that there is a pedestrian there. How many people even know that there's a motorcycle out there? You know, and they can go faster than we can. Okay. I've said my piece. Good luck on the budget and I think you all did very well. And I'm glad to see you all smiling because sometimes there's good things in this world, okay? Appreciate it. Y'all have a great evening and I do yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Citizens' communication is still open?
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say anything, but I, I just like to watch that clock run. I wanted to tell you that I've, was very flattered to walk into council tonight and see a dear old friend of mine, Dwayne Bennett, sitting here, who I've known since we were rumbling up and down the floor at Crane and Howe back in the sixth and seventh and eighth grade, and we played ball together in high school. And I've known him for over 40 years. And aside from the fact that there's two sides to every pancake, I know you guys typically get it right when you look at it cumulatively. I would just voice a strong opinion that if this man tells you he's going to do something, I believe it in my heart. And if he's asking you for time and you can give it to him, then I strongly encourage you to give it to him. If it's something that you simply can't do, he'll take that and go down the road. But in a town where too many properties are delinquent and, and decrepit and left in decay, for a guy to come to you and know the players involved and to have made an effort to try to reach out to you for time, if it's possible for you to grant it to him, it would mean a lot to me personally if you would do it. And that's, I'll see the rest of my time back to talking about pedestrians on the sidewalk. But this is a good man from a great family and I can tell you that I was in that home when there weren't any white boys down there. So do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Howard Motall. I'm going to stand up here and talk to you a little bit about an issue I have with code enforcement and the situation I'm involved with now. In March of last year, code enforcement, they took issue with my leased lot. It's owned by a retired city Victoria fireman, Larry Volkmer. Now, he's the one that's receiving notice and, and received notice letter about this issue. Soon as he called me up, let me know about it. I called up code enforcement, set up a meeting so we can go to the property and talk about the issue, see if we can come up with a remedy, what the problem is. Andrea Ayala was the agent that was assigned to this case. She said there was a complaint and that's why they're moving forward with this. Now, you know, up to that point and even now, I get along with all my neighbors there. And I went around and talked to all of them and none of them would own up to complaining. So who filed a complaint, I don't know. I still have good, good relations with them. Now, this lot that I'm talking about is on the backside of Texas concrete, or the lot that's cut out of Texas concrete on Mockingbird. You know, Texas concrete, big, dirty, dusty, noisy industry. They're on the north side, they're on the east side, and they're on the west side of this block. And across Mockingbird on the south side, there's the biggest automobile junkyard in the county, CND Junkyard. Now, according to the tax, tax records, this block is an area that's described as farm and ranch. Not residential, but farm and ranch. And, you know, when I discovered that years ago, I said, you know, this is the place for me to go ahead and set up my equipment yard, which is basically what I'm using it for. Now, going back to this meeting with Andrea, there was an addressable amount of junk that was on the ground close to the road. But there was a reason for that and I explained it to Andrea. I had discovered a young man. He's in his late twenties. He was intellectually challenged and he was living in a shed with no water, no electricity, and had a shower curtain for a door. And this was a part of, of the, the year to where mosquitoes were just crazy. So I don't know how he could do it, but he did have a food stamp card and so I know he wasn't starving. So I tried to give him some work, do various chores, you know, raking and whatnot, mowing. One of these jobs was to load the salvaged metal that I had, all the parts that I needed off some of this junk, the rest of it needed to be loaded up. And I figured, fine, just take it, go sell it. That'll pay him his salary. Well, he, you know, he's unemployable, so he couldn't get the job done. What I could do in 10 minutes, it took him an hour to do. So a lot of times, you know, if he didn't get it completely loaded, you know, I couldn't waste the next day having to load the rest of it. So we had to unload it. And that's how it accumulated that close to the road. So initially, you know, this, this stuff is all being described as junk, trash, and objectional matter, according to the compliance. And I, now I begged to differ. I said, you know, a lot of it is mechanical equipment. Some of it need repair, some of them not. Just doesn't look appealing, but it's not junk. Now, I learned from Andrea, when I asked her about, you know, this trash complaint, I said, you know, "Where's yours trash?" You know, "I pick up everything that's on the property. There's not even a cigarette butt." Why? Because this place is unfenced. And if I go through there and I find a cigarette butt, I know somebody's been around there. You know, usually somebody I don't want in there. But anyway, talking to Andrea about that, she pointed to a pile of tree trimming and shrub trimmings that I had there. And it was about a pickup load and she said, "That we write up as being trash." And to me, you know, unless you're there and you can physically see it, you don't know what, what they're calling trash. To me, trash, that's litter. That's stuff you take to the landfill. So, you know, to me, that's misleading, the way they're reporting that. Oh yeah, and across the street on Mockingbird, you know, there's a pile that's at least twice the size of what I had. It's deteriorating pile of tree debris and it's going unaddressed. Now, I got to talking with Andrea and I said, "Okay, I'll get rid of the brush and I'll start hauling off all this junk metal. We just need to come, you know, to an agreement on a remedy and, you know, how to protect the stuff that I know is not junk, but what she is saying is junk." We came up with an idea. I'm going to build a fence. Now, at this point, I made sure she understood where I was going to put up a fence. She agreed with it. I also addressed several times, on the backside of the lot, there's a fence line. And she said, "You don't have to worry about that because you can't see it, not from the other side of the road on Mockingbird." She said, "You can't see anything? Don't worry about it." And I'm going to run out of time, but as you can see, there's more to it and trespassing is a couple of things that happened during this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motall. I don't think any of us are aware of any of that, so staff can address this at a later time. Update as is needed. Citizens' communication is still open. If anyone else would like to come forward. Okay. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close citizens' communication and we have three items with three public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance setting the tax rate at a total rate of 62.24 cents per $100 of property valuation and levying a tax upon all property subject to taxation within the city of Victoria, Texas for the 2018 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Victoria, providing for the assessment and collection of taxes, apportioning said levy amount to various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city, providing for penalties and interest for delinquent taxes as prescribed by the Texas Tax Code, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C1. Anyone who would like to speak about the tax rate can come forward now. Seeing no one jump up, we'll close the public hearing. Seeing no one jump up, we'll close the public hearing on C1, and I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I've got a little bit, but I want to see if, I want to use my bully pulpit for a minute here. I was going to maybe do this on Thursday because we do have another meeting Thursday, council knows. I had some interesting conversations over the last few weeks about the tax rate, and it's fascinating, it strikes me how confusing and how complicated it is. I had some good questions asked of me, and it has become so complicated that I can hardly explain the calculation of the effective rate to a citizen anymore. A good question that was asked of me as well, and you guys know, let me back up, you know that when we pass the effective rate, that's not a tax increase because we collect the same amount on the same properties as we did the year before on aggregate, and which is what the effective rate, which is what we're fixing to vote on. But the question was asked, well, if my property value doesn't change from last year to this year, do I pay the same in taxes? And I had to answer honestly, no. You don't. You pay a little more because you have to make up for everyone else in the exemptions and the 65, over 65 tax cap. And this is nothing new to me. I've been up here long enough to somewhat understand this. And Gilbert provides us with his calculation of the effective tax rate at every budget, and y'all have a copy of it. How many steps is it now, Gilbert? 50-something steps to get to that calculation? But what's really, and again, just, I'm just using my few minutes here, I want to show everybody something. This is a tax code from 83, 84, 1983, 84. Notice the size of it, okay? Not a very big book. This is the tax code from 2017, and the print is a lot smaller. You know, see the difference in size? And you see the thickness? You know who does this code? The state legislature. Is that, you know, this is full of exemptions, and it reminds me of what we've done to the federal tax code, but it's amazing what's in here, and I'm going to turn to one of my favorites. There's an exemption in here, and I'm going to read from the book. "A person is entitled to an exemption from taxation of raw cocoa and green coffee that the person holds in Harris County." That's only Harris County. So I'm sure someone donated some money to the right people to get that exemption. So it's very annoying to me that, you know, most of those exemptions are commercial-related, I'm sure, but when that occurs, residential taxpayers make up the difference, and I find that incredibly annoying, and it's almost impossible to explain to our citizens how this works anymore. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. I almost did it last year, but I didn't. Very frustrating. Okay.
I have one thing to add. We do have an increase in the tax rate, although it is the effective rate. We have been diligent in our approach to the effective tax rate, and so that when we have experienced rising appraisals, we have lowered that effective rate, or lowered the tax rate to meet the effective rate, and we've been pretty consistent with that. And I just want to point out that it's unfortunate this year that appraisals are down and the effective tax rate goes up. So, not adding anything to it.
No, you're right. I was in this chamber in the late 90s when the council at that time passed the over 65 tax freeze, and I watched them debate it, and we're paying for it.
2004.
2004? I was thinking it was late 90s. But, I mean, I understand no one likes taxes, and we love to give people breaks, but you can see the direction that's going and giving people breaks, and pretty soon, who's left paying? There's no more equity in the system because of this. I'm sorry. So it's very frustrating. Just try to explain to someone that your value stayed the same, we didn't raise taxes, but your taxes are going up. Explain that, you know? And I had, yeah, and see how the rest of the conversation goes. Okay. Are there any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Thank you. C2.
C2 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Victoria for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, and ending on September 30th, 2019, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking and fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C2. If anyone would like to speak to the budget specifically, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that budget, excuse me, that public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Raina, did you have anything you need to share with us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I have, Mr. Collins, will you pass that out? We had several discussions since the last time we voted on this budget. So we had a little discussion about Larry Lane, health savings account, also about PD and fire, step plan and market. So what he's handing out is proposed changes since the last conversation we had that we voted on back on August the 23rd. And I'll walk you through it in a minute, and it's mimicking everything we talked, Ms. Garrett talked about last, oh, last week, I believe. So with that said, the first change is, of course, we agreed on up front the step and market for PD effective October 1st. So we increase in the general fund budget, I'm rounding these numbers, $341,000, okay? The second column, bottom line, shows $500,000 to health savings account as a seed money effective January 1st. During our conversation last time, we'd used $500,000 from general fund, and we also talked about deleting the library carpet. And I'm proposing to y'all tonight, if possible, add back the carpet and let the water fund and environmental fund pick up $100,000 of the other portion of the 500. We make sure 500. All this is one-time money. That's why this works out this way. It's not reoccurring. That's the change from last conversation we had. We add back the library carpet, and we make the water fund and environmental pick up $100,000 each, plus the 300 from general fund. That makes you $500,000. All this is one-time money. That's in front of you right now to make a decision if you want to do that. If not, I got the other handout that goes back to what we said last week. It's your call.
Does this keep us from tapping the general fund?
This proposal allows us to do the carpet project, replacing the whole carpet in the library by the one in front of you right now. By doing that, I have to go to the environmental fund and the water fund, which they can afford. I ran, looked through, ran the numbers, and take $100,000 from each to make up the 500 from the 300, from the total $500,000. Does that make sense?
What are we deferring in those funds?
I'm not deferring anything.
Nothing for free.
Not deferring, I'm just tapping their working capital, and it's still above my policy and my reserves.
They're both grinning over here, so those two department heads, I don't know.
Ignore them.
I got a question. We've talked about raising rates on and voted on raising water and waste service fees, environmental service fees, right? If the funds are healthy enough, explain again why we're raising funds, raising the fees?
Which fees? The water rate?
Yes.
I'm dipping into my working capital, which I have slightly over the amount. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't, that fee don't generate $100,000 because I'm adding, let's talk, for example, the water rate fund. I'm adding close to $1 million in new programs. The rates will fund that. The $100,000, I already have that $100,000 in one-time money. These are reoccurring expenses I'm talking about, not one-time money. That's the difference.
And the whole idea of the rate study was to make sure that that fund is self-supporting, and it has not been in the past.
But we're taking $100,000 out of it.
Well, out of the fund, yes.
At one time.
But it still must support itself. We can do it one time, next year we've got to put it back in effect.
I say we leave it in there.
That's fine.
I'm on the favor of leaving it in there, especially if we're raising the rates on the water because we want that fund to be self-supporting and take care of itself. Let's not go raid that fund. Let's just do without the carpet this year and fund it like we had talked about before, and let's...
Out of the general fund?
Yeah, and keep going down the path we'd want it to go down with the water fund.
Yeah. I see your objection.
Are those two funds ending working capital? I know we don't have specific policy on those. We do.
Yes, we do.
We do?
We have a three-month minimum reserve.
Three months? Okay, okay.
Mr. Collins, Helen, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins handed out the original one back from last conversation, which shows the $500,000 in general fund. We subtract out the 175 carpet and everything else, and we delete the Larry Lane. That's the one we talked about last week that y'all signed off on. I just thought we proposed something a little different, see if you want to consider the carpet. That's all I was doing.
Mayor and council, in order to facilitate discussion of these two, would you all do me a favor and put a capital A at the top of the first page that Mr. Raina passed out, and a capital B at the top of the second page that Mr. Raina passed out? That way, if a council member so chooses to make a motion to adopt one of these changes, we know which one we're talking about.
Have these, has a change been made? Did we make a change last week, or was this just discussion?
No. Last week was mostly conversation, giving direction to count to staff and city manager how you want the changes to occur moving forward, and these are it. The only difference here is you want the carpet project and something else, we go to the water fund or the environmental, or if you don't want that, you go to B, the last one that was handed out, and that's what we've been talking about since last week. But we, last, all the conversation we had, we have not voted on the budget.
That's right. It was a hearing only.
A couple of weeks ago, I think I kind of gave you a hard time about moving money around and misunderstood my comments, and this is kind of what I was thinking. I'll say this, and I don't want to rile staff up, but this used to be the norm, you know, a lot more many years ago. Sometimes it's necessary, sometimes it's not, it's all valid points about whether we do it or not. Do those, I'm just curiosity, and I can understand Mr. Bocknight's recommendation 100%. Those two funds, that $100,000, under that option, you still meet your three months in each of those funds?
Yes, sir.
Really? Okay.
May I ask a question? Can you explain to me what the one-time seed money for the employee health savings is? I wasn't here for the discussion.
Okay. You want to?
Oh, I can. With us going to the high deductible plan, it would seed their health savings account, which they're eligible for if they have a high deductible plan. So we're, our recommendation is to move away from the PPO plan, offer two high deductible plans, and so it kind of bridges the gap until the employees can start saving money in their high, in their health savings account. Because they're going to be out first dollar, I think 1750 and 3200 are the deductibles. Those employees are out the first dollars. So, you know, we're going to encourage employees to set up a health savings account to augment their first dollar.
Well, on January 1st or close to that timeframe, employee who's on a high deductible will get $1,000. It's their money to be used against, towards any medical expenses or how they use, they wish to use it. That amount of money that the city's going to put in there is not taxable to the employee.
Okay. It was not in the original budget, and through discussions that council has had about the budget and in response to the concerns from some of the employees, council has discussed some seed money to help set up their health savings account, which would be available. I think it's important to add that to the discussion.
Okay. Well, I'd seen that you had chosen the high deductibles, but I didn't know about that. So everybody's going to be eligible for an HSA?
Well, there's some, there's some caveats in there. I would say almost everybody, if you're on Medicare, you're not eligible for a health savings account, and there's a few other, but most of our employees will be, yes. And I know we talked last time about funding it all on January 1, 2, and the more I've thought about that over the last couple of days, probably need to look at a policy on how we're going to fund it. You know, Mr. Howell Pasca brought up, okay, if we fund it on January 2 and they quit on January 3, is that their money? And that, the answer is, yes, it is. So what, it doesn't affect the budget, but what I'd like to do is bring back a policy on how we would implement the health savings account seeding real shortly, but it does not affect the $500,000, and it's still there.
A month or quarter would be good.
I'm sorry?
Either by the month or by the quarter would be good, either one.
And that's, we've checked with Willis, and they do do, you know, twice a year, quarterly, monthly, it's, yeah, so. But it's still the same idea. It seeds some of that money in that health savings account.
Okay.
The discussion on budget is always the same. You know, what are we going to try to really solve, and what can we at least hold off another year to really look for a better solution?
Right, okay. Well, I had missed the health presentation, so I was just wondering.
And we'll be glad to go over that with you.
Yeah, we were just trying to soften the blow. Essentially, there was such a change between what we were doing and what was proposed based upon the cost evaluation, and we've probably kept it artificially low for a long period of time, and the jump being significant and not nearly significant as what it, what it could be, what the experts say that it should be, but this was, again, a chance to soften the blow to the employees.
Okay. Well, I understand, I just didn't know what to, appreciate it.
And I know at the last meeting, Mr. Del Garza asked for us to look at lowering the deductible $200, and I believe Ms. Martha Johnny called and clarified that. You just wanted that on the individual and not family or any other out-of-pocket deductibles or anything. And so we're working with our actuary at Willis to come back on that, but my recommendation is going to be that that cost is spread out over the premiums. You know, we brought to you a plan that our health fund needed shoring up, which we did, so for us to take that $200 on deductibles and put it back into the health fund, I don't believe is the right way to go. So my recommendation is going to be increase premiums. I don't think the premiums are going to be substantial, but it's going to spread that out, so. And, you know, one thing to keep in mind, not everybody meets their deductible, but everybody will have to pay in that share if council wishes to go that way of lowering that deductible, but we can talk about that on Thursday before the final vote on Tuesday 11.
I'll make a motion to amend item C2 so that the total budget, revised proposed budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019 is $132,892,379, which corresponds to sheet B.
Second?
I'll second that.
You seconded?
I'll second.
Okay. I think we've already talked about it, so we have a motion and a second to amend the budget as presented on the sheet B. Any more discussion about it?
I have to agree with Councilman Bocknight, if for no other reason, we're talking about that fund should be self-sustaining, and all of them should be. Long time ago, we didn't make the garbage dump pay for itself, and, you know, wait a minute, we don't have the extra money, it's got to come from somewhere. And this is an attempt to address that going forward. Whether it come out of this pot or that pot, does it make a lot of difference, Gilbert? It's the general fund or wastewater fund?
You talking about the library expenditure? Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
Well, okay.
Health savings, to me, the reason I, I don't necessarily agree with the mayor about this, is what we used to do before. This is being presented to council, so you can make a decision if this is the route you want to go. Second is that, since we're talking about one-time money, I just thought, you know, we have to deal with the library too eventually today or in the future. I just thought there's a way to take care of it, maybe there's a possibility to take care of it now, or we're going to have to deal with it in 2020. That's the only issue is there. And it should be, that expenditure is a general fund expenditure. As to the other two funds, they have the adequate funding reserves and everything else as a one-time money, not reoccurring. So I just thought there's a possibility to make that work. But again, it's up to council decision if they want to just proceed forward with the original proposal last week.
And I think we appreciate all the options being brought too, and this is an option. I appreciate that.
That's always.
No further discussion on the amendment. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay. So, the amendment passes. Further discussion on the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay, passes. C3.
Item C3 is an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 City of Victoria General Fund and VES Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $598,334 for the replacement of a pumper truck for the fire department, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Yeah, do we have a public hearing on this too? Sorry. That's okay. If anyone would, we'll open the public hearing on C3. If anyone wants to talk about a pumper truck, now's the time. Seeing no one get up, we'll close the public hearing on C3. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? I did Google it, and it's a very nice-looking truck from what I saw online, so.
Is it red?
The ones I saw were red. I think many other cities.
Sure, for that price, you can paint it whatever color you want.
I'll bet, I'll bet. It's a good equipment. How old did the la, how long did the last one, the last, anyone know?
Over 11 years.
It says 2004 in the.
Oh, is it saying 2004? Okay.
Yeah, it used to over 10 years.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. There's your pumper truck. Now, we'll go into the consent agenda.
There are 11 items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 21st and the minutes of the special meeting on August 23rd, 2018. Second, an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the Development Services Department, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. The third is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the Fire Marshals Office, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. The fourth is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees to revise and add fees related to parks and recreation, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. The fifth is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the Department of Public Works, including but not limited to an increase in the water and wastewater rate structure, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. The sixth is an ordinance amending Chapter, the 2017-2018 City of Victoria General Fund budget to provide funding for the retirement of the Assistant Director of Finance and to provide funding for the health and dental insurance for the city manager's department, providing for savings and declaring an effective date. The seventh is a resolution approving the purchase. I'm sorry, I have to turn this off. This is the first, mayor, I'd gotten so distracted during the consent agenda, I lost my place. We were, I believe, on number seven, a resolution approving the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer pumper from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group for a total purchase price of $598,334, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. The eighth is a resolution approving the sale of tax-foreclosed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 0.295 acres more or less off of Robles to Armando Arredondo in exchange for $1,200 and declaring an effective date. We are not doing item D9. The 10th item is a resolution approving the sale of tax-foreclosed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 308 East Guadalupe to Kyle Kirby in exchange for $9,500 and declaring an effective date. The 11th is a resolution approving the purchase of uniforms for police department employees in an estimated annual amount of $85,000 via a government cooperative contract from Galls LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. And the 12th is a resolution awarding the 2017-2018 gate valve and fire hydrant maintenance project to DMD Consultants Incorporated for their low bid of $47,950, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. All items passed. E1.
Item E1 is a resolution hearing an appeal from property owner Gerald Duane Bennett of a decision rendered by the Building and Standards Commission during their regularly scheduled meeting of July 26, 2018, ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1111 South De Leon, rendering a final decision to sustain or overturn the commission's order and declaring an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Madrid, did you want to give us synopsis of this?
Yes.
Case that, that you guys have open?
Yes, please.
I think that'd be very beneficial for all of us.
Mayor, council, on July 26, 2018, the Building Standards Commission declared the building at 1111 South De Leon unsafe and that it has more than 50% damage to the structure and issued an order to demolish the structure within 30 days. Now, when the, the commission orders or determines a structure to have more than 50% damage, it's an automatic demolition. Before that, on October 27, 2011, the Building Standards Commission also declared the building unsafe, but issued an order to secure the property and repair it within 120 days. At that time, they did not, did not determine it to have 50% or more damage. Sometime after the 2011 order, some demolition took place. It was, I believe, a two-car garage, and it was removed. But the rest of the building remained unrepaired. So, it continued to be an attractive nuisance and, and a concern for health, safety, and welfare. In June of 2018, we sent notices back again to the owner that we were going to consider the structure as an unsafe building again. We were going to send it to the Building Standards Commission. And in July of 2018, the next month, another portion of that structure was demolished. It was an addition that was on the back part of the, of the house. Now, that, that demolition material is still on site piled up, piled up in the, in the back of the property. One of the things about the, the work that the, that the owner had the contractor do to this building, one was to demolish that addition and to secure the roof. Now, with the, with the roof addition or the roof repairs that the contractor made, yeah, he did a bad job. He installed some sheathing over, he, he installed improperly. He's not on, on centers, so he had to make some adjustments here and there. But more importantly, he installed the sheathing on top of faulty structural rafters. They are, show an obvious sag in the roof and need to be replaced. So, the existing sheathing that they installed will need to be removed and will need to go down into the structural members of the roof and remove those also. So, substantial work needs to be done to the roof. There's also damage to the exterior perimeter beams. There's show, it shows termite damage and rot, some dry rot. Typically, with, with the beams around the property, around the perimeter, you experience some damage also to the bottom plates and to the wall studs. So, we have to tear out usually about two foot and start replacing those exterior beams and any studs and anything else that come in contact there. So, there's some, some work that needs to be done also to the perimeter of the building. Another problem with the, the building is that the wiring is, is not safe. The entire wiring system needs to be replaced. So, we, we feel like there's some, some significant work that needs to be done. The building is located in the flood zone, so all work that's done to the, to the building will need to meet floodplain requirements. If, in the floodplain, if you exceed 50% of the value of the structure, the, the FEMA requirements trigger, meaning that the building will need to be elevated up at least four feet from where it currently is today. The Victoria County appraisal district records show the property worth $3,340. So, 50% of that would be six, $1,670. They're allowed to make repairs up to $1,670 before they have to elevate the structure to meet the floodplain requirements. So.
That's not the case.
Hold on, Mr. Bennett, let him finish it, and we can talk to you. Thank you.
So, that's, that's kind of covers what I needed to.
Okay. Counsel, did, how many of you had a chance to go check it out? I know, I went.
I did.
I'm sorry?
As well.
Yeah. Jan, drove by, did y'all have a chance to drive by? Okay. Yeah, I went over there this afternoon. So, this actually all started as far back as 2011. This has been going on a long time. I, you know, the experience I have rehabbing, I've done a few houses and whatnot. And I can't see this. I've done some pretty rough structures in my past, but this particular structure, I wouldn't, I'd start over if it were mine. I'm just being honest. I just have to be honest. I have no emotional attachment to the property or anything like that, though. I recognize that. But counsel, y'all want to add something? I mean, those either.
Going back through some of the history here, and I respect the fact that it's a family home. But going back to 2011, it took until November of 2012 to be remedied, that's 17 months before it was eventually signed off on. And we're asking, initially, it was for 90 days, and now it's 180 days on part-time when we're working. I, I, I can't see it being done.
Got it. Now, address the council, that's okay.
Just a minute, just a minute. I will, hold on, Mr. Bennett. Did y'all, anyone else, would y'all, are you okay with Mr. Bennett having a few minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, but I have a question for Mr. Madrid. Okay. When you said that the value of it is 3340, and once he, if he has to do it more than 1670 in repairs, then he has to elevate it four feet?
That's correct.
The whole structure?
Yes, ma'am.
That would mean tearing it down and starting up?
Uh, no, not necessarily. It would, it would involve some engineering and, and some constructive work to raise it up and get it about five foot in the air. Yes. It can be done through some engineering, and it would be required to go through engineering as per the floodplain requirements.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Madrid at this, at this moment? Okay. Mr. Bennett, did you, just a couple of minutes, please? If you have some comments at the mic. That way, you're recorded and on TV and all that good stuff.
The head is getting bald, so I don't want to be on TV. Listen, we're talking apples and oranges. The flood came, the great flood of whichever year it was, it came. And it washed a lot of people's homes away. And so, what the FEMA requirement was back then was the back of the house needed to be at least 51 inches off the ground. That was the case. That house, at that time, and to this day, that part of the house met that threshold. It was above that 51-inch threshold. Came down here, got technoshot, went in, took the sheet rock out. Another issue, I, I really appreciate your, your service to the community, but you're misrepresenting the facts. In 2011, we're talking about apples and oranges. In 2011, when I came down here, the issue was securing the building. That's what it was asking me to do, secure it unsafe. Today, what I've done is demoed the 50% that you were talking about. Correct. It does have a boat. Correct. I was duped for 800 bucks. But purposely, I'm not here to hoodwink you, Mr. McCoy or this committee or this community. In essence, basically, what has happened here is he's talking about a 2011 incident that was addressed. If it was not addressed, why has it taken so long to address it now before you? Because if it been an issue back then, it should have been addressed back then. 2011 went by, 2012 went by, 14 all the way up to 18. But now, all of a sudden, it was closed off. Laramie Gilden was a person assigned to my case. Call Laramie, regular basis, no problem. When he's talking about the five-foot threshold, FEMA never said that to me. No one ever said that to me. Yes, there are people down there on De Leon Street, Wheeler Street, they did have to have their houses lifted. No one ever, no one ever communicated raising it five feet off the ground. The threshold was 51 inches. They, FEMA came, measured it, it exceeded 51 inches. That has since been torn down. The house is now back to its original dwelling where my grandfather built a long time ago. What I'm asking you guys to do is grant me the time. Mr. Madrid conveniently is again misrepresenting the facts. If that home was in total disrepair, you can go in there right now. The two rooms that are good, it has shingles in it. It has wood in it. I came back in, I decked the floor. Paul, you made a comment about an emotional attachment. I fight every day, I don't stop fighting. I'm asking you for permission to continue to get the house back to where it needs to be.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes, let me finish.
Okay.
Let me finish. Yes. Yes, it does need some roofing work. I mentioned to you guys earlier that I have 20-foot rafters in the house right now that were partially damaged. That, that's what they were in there to do, was to fix the roof. The, the contract that I had with the guy, he was going to come in and do all of that. If you look at the information provided to you, that was our agreement to meet what I was supposed to do by you all. But to that end, I've exceeded my time. I'm just asking for your consideration to finish started, to finish doing what I need to get done.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question while you're here.
Okay.
So, this goes back about six or eight years. You're asking for how many days now? You want three, three months?
Let the rec, Mr. Mayor, let the record state it clearly.
Okay, okay, I won't, fine.
Let the record state it clearly.
What are you asking for in days right now?
120 days.
What, what do you expect to have done in 120 days?
I, I gave you guys a timeline. There's a timeline that should be in your package.
Page 163 in the package.
In your ti, in, in your packet, there's a timeline. It walks through everything that I will have done. I think I proposed for 180 days. But it, it walks through everything that I said I would do. I think 60, I think 15 to 90 days, I said I'm going to do this. Yes, it's a lot of debris back there right now. Because I had oodles of two-by-fours in the house. I had, I had a bunch of materials in there. It's not my fault I got duped. Yes, I should have exercised due diligence.
So, you said 100, excuse me, I'm sorry, 120 days?
I think in there it says 180.
It's 180.
180 in there.
90?
180.
It's a plan of action, and it has A, B, C, and D.
Plan of action, A, B, C, and D. It's 180.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In light of the fact that now you have to have the house elevated four feet, is that going to be part of your plan?
I feel like that's a trap, and to be perfectly honest with you. There are some, there are some properties down in that division, all down through there that, that are not, have not been elevated. And, and, and there's a church down there that's not been elevated. And so, I, I guess now, I guess now that I'm here, because this, tonight is the first time that I'm, I'm being told that it has to be elevated, this is new to me. All this time, I come down here, I cut the grass when I can cut, come down here, cut the grass. No one in all these years has said anything about elevating the property. Tonight is the first time I'm hearing that. The very first time. I'm not upset, sir, you don't, you don't, you don't have to stand up. My dad has taught me how to conduct myself down here. Rodney used to talk about protocol, I know how to do protocol.
I think, uh, the, the correct staff in 98, were the requirements different than they are now with respect to raising? Or is that true, yes or no?
Yes.
It's different?
We're under new regulatory.
Yeah, now they want you to go up higher, I guess? Okay, that's probably, yeah.
And it's also triggered when you're doing work on the house. If, if you're at that 51% of the value, that Mr. Madrid, that's what's going to trigger that floodplain permit.
If it helps, I don't think it will, but those are FEMA floodplain, uh, rules, not ours, that we're forced to, just, just FYI, just that we have to enforce.
And there's a new floodplain.
Well, I beg the que, the question that I beg, though, there are some houses, the question that I beg is how do you just oppose that there are some houses that are lower than mine? And then there are some houses that have been elevated. So how do you, how do you govern that?
That's a great question and it's the work on the house that triggers it. When a law, for example, is passed, it says, let's say you got to raise them all 10 feet. Well, you can't go down there and make people raise a house 10 feet that they're just living there and there's nothing wrong with it. But when something occurs to make them have to go in and do, you know, over 50% in this case, then the rule kicks in. It would be very, almost impossible to make everyone raise their house. In this case, I think it's five feet or four feet, whatever it was. But by the fact that you now are starting to repair the house, it triggers that. It, it's unfortunate, but that's what's happening. I think I spoke correct.
Yeah, would it be possible for James to put up the GIS with the floodplain on it in that address?
Um, we, we can.
I, listen, I don't want to take up unnecessary time. All I'm asking you to do, and to ask you a question, Mrs. Solis, and, and.
Yes, sir, but I'm just saying that now you have to go by those rules. Was the 180 days going to be enough time for you?
I am not sure. Um, like I said, tonight, tonight is the first time personally that anyone has conveyed this new regulatory rule to me. And personally, I feel like it's entrapment, to be perfectly honest with you. I, I basically, um, I come here to say, to address this issue, but now you're saying this, you have a whole different issue. Um, but it is the way the ballgame is played. I'm a big boy, I know how to lace them up and so we'll do what we have to do.
Okay.
I don't have a problem granting the extra time. I just caution you that it, it's, like the mayor said, it's going to be tough financially to get that structure up to code and you're, you're fighting a strong headwind. But if it means that much to you, I'm okay with giving you the 180 days. I don't have a problem. I'm, I can wait six months.
I just, I have some concerns that, um, through everything that you've said, you're going to do all this work yourself. And, um, I've got concerns that, that it can really be done in that time period. And, and frankly, uh, putting felt and putting some shingles on is not going to fix that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm, my intention R is, when you received that information in your packet, that was before I received notification that I would be, um, starting a full-time job tomorrow. So that was sent to you through Mr. Kaminsky several weeks ago. Uh, so I, I learned last week that I now, thank God, I will be working. And so, yes, I totally agree with you. Uh, my intention was not to come in here to appease or appeal anyone initially. My intent was to do what I was supposed to do, being compliant of what they asked me to do. And compliant, when I spoke to one of your staff members, was that secure the home, dry it in, so to speak, from the business, and you should be okay. That's what I was told by their department. But tonight, I come in here and I'm told that you have a whole different situation. But, Mrs. Scott, to answer your question, no, it's not just going to be something by slapping some felt and some shingles and being done with it. That's not the intention.
Okay.
The, the, what, again, with Mr. Bucknight, I, I agree, the time doesn't concern me. Uh, the, the 180 days, I fear that, I mean, that's, you have X amount of weekends to do that with a full-time job, to come down here, maintain property and improve property up to a, to a, to a status. Uh, it, it seems like an impossible task to me. I, I, the 180 days doesn't bother me. Uh, I, 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 I'll vote for it, I wish you luck.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Now, is this, is this going to, is everybody through? Mr. Bennett, y'all have all your questions? For Mr. Bennett, go, okay, go.
Have you spoken to any contractors about the cost? Because if you're working full-time, contracts are going to have to be contacted.
Sorry. I just learned that I was, I'm going to start back working this week. Uh, now I'm moving forward, someone to whom I went to high school with, he's a roofer, his name is Bed Nord. I'm going to reach out to him. We, we went to high school together. He's professional, he's bondable, and he will be certified and he won't do wrong by me. Once I get it dried in, so to speak, the intention R is, is to find reputable, this time, contractors. The thing of it is, and I'm, I'm preaching to the choir now, um, three to six to nine-month waiting period. To answer, coming back to what you were saying, Mrs. Scott, I'm going to do all the ancillary things, many of the ancillary things that I can do preliminarily. And then when I find that person in lieu of trying to secure it like it needs to be done to comply with what needs to be done, I will adhere to that as well. That's the intention.
I'm willing to give him the extension.
I can make a suggestion, I have a question first. Um, thank you, Mr. Bennett. I, I don't think there's any further discussion with you or questions. Thank you. Mr. Madrid, Mr. Madrid, um, or Julie or Charmel, whoever, assuming we do this, do you have to reopen a case again in a few months if it's not up to the standards? Do you have to start this process over again?
If the, if the council votes tonight to modify the order, to give the resident the time to do this, then essentially the order of the Building and Standards Commission gets changed. And he will then be ordered to give that amount of time in order to make it repaired. At the end of that time, if he has not completed those repairs, then it will have to be brought back to Building and Standards as a separate case.
I'm just being sensitive of staff time. So we're not, we're just, we'll just pick right back up. But unless it's all done great and whatever, then the case can be closed. Okay. Okay.
Now, how, how would his timeline be modified by the fact that, um, I mean, it seems to me that, uh, the intention has been a demolition. And so the raising of the building hasn't really been in a discussion because there hasn't been any need for that discussion. But from the information on the scheduling, uh, you need to have a timeline if we give him more than 90 days. And where would the raising of the building, uh, where would the timing of that come into this? I mean, he hasn't had a chance to present a timeline, but the ordinance requires it, at least the rules.
Well, one of the FEMA requirements, uh, is, will not allow me to issue a permit once it reaches $1,670. I can't issue any more permits until the elevating takes place. So we're going to have to work up to that point or work, you know, or elevate it first and then do the repairs to the structure. So I can't even issue a permit once we reach, reach that threshold for him to repair that structure. So that timeline needs to be.
I think what we'll need to do is sit down with John Johnston, our, um, floodplain engineer and, and Rick, and create a, a timeline that's doable based on what the amount of work is. Because I, I would expect that the repairs to the roof would hit that threshold when we're talking about the rafters and the.
So there's been no permits issued at all?
Okay. With all due respect to Mr. Bennett, that's an awful lot of work to do in that amount of time. Uh, I'm willing to give him that, but I think he is perhaps being, uh, optimistic in his abilities. And I hope we're not getting him into trouble rather than helping him.
Well, if he engages a contractor, you mentioned a roofer, they have to get a permit. So let's, let's let him find, try, let that roofer go look at that structure. I don't think it's structurally safe. I'm sorry, it's not personal. So, okay, counsel, we, we don't have to belabor the point anymore. I, I hear a consensus to grant the 180 days. How do you need that worded or anything? We need to make a motion to amend?
Let me flip back, do we have a motion yet on the?
We do.
Do you have a motion on the resolution itself, which says that we're denying his appeal and upholding? So what we need to do is an amendment to amend the resolution on the floor. And what I would entertain is a motion that amends paragraph one of the resolution to read, "The city council hereby grants the appeal and over," excuse me, and modifies the Building and Standards Commission order to demolish the structure to give the, the applicant 180 days to complete all repairs on the structure.
And then this, um, this timeline that we've been given says that if that happens, uh, there has to be, um, there has to be, uh, some type of a schedule and, uh, Building Standards Commission shall require progress reports to show compliance with the time schedule. So would we want to maybe put in?
Those are the rules that apply to the Building and Standards Commission. And at this stage, because you are, the city council reviewing that, you have a little bit more latitude. But in addition to that, he has already presented to you, uh, a plan and a schedule for when he will get that work done. That is the A, B, C, D that he pointed out earlier, that says he'll have this part done within 30 days, this part done within 60 days, this part done within 90 days. And so that has already been.
I see.
So the only thing that I have a question about in your, um, proposed amendment, Mr. Goush, is what's the definition of required repairs? I don't want a moving target for Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
You want to table it to Thursday? Sorry, I have a motion second and withdrawal, would that help with any of this?
I don't think we can.
Oh, you can't post it by Thursday, that's right.
We can do it on Tuesday the 11th.
Y'all want to get a little more straightened out? I'm just suggesting that.
I think so, just from the perspective of getting the resolution written correctly.
Um, what do we need, why don't we?
I'm not in favor of, of, uh, granting the extension. I don't know whether, uh, anybody else feels the same way I do. I mean, we have a motion in a second, which has not yet been modified or amended. And I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I do have a problem with that as well. We've got ordinance on the book. I don't mind giving the man a break, but you do realize we're breaking our own rules to do so.
So we need to amend it or vote up and down on it? Somebody needs to offer an amendment now. That's what I think I hear.
We do not have an amendment on the floor yet, that is correct.
I, I make a motion to amend E1 to say the city council hereby, um, accepts the appeal and modifies the Building and Standards Commission order to demolish the structure. Uh, when, um, so we grant the appeal and give the applicant 180 days to make the structure good per the ordinances.
Compliance?
Yeah, compliance with the Building and Standards Commission for a safe structure.
And to that timeline that he's admitting to?
180 days.
Okay, that also is a requirement.
Okay, we motion a second, on a, on a motion to amend, um.
Seconded?
Yeah. Is there any clarification about what Mr. Bucknight said? Basically 180 days to come in compliance. That's really what I'm hearing here. Okay. And while we're on it, staff and Mr. Bennett, y'all got to talk. Sit down and talk, figure this out, no surprises. I can tell you, they didn't do anything intentionally tonight. I, okay? So y'all figured it out. Um, assuming this passes, any further discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same?
Aye.
Okay. You got that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's been amended and it's still on the floor. Any further discussion as amended? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, noted. All right, E2.
E2 is a resolution approving the selection of engineering services providers for an application development project of, design and the implementation of projects funded by the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and/or Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion a second, any questions? John, you're going to get off the hook?
Yes, sir, only if you have questions.
Looks like a whole lot of work for a whole lot of people.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, eyes have it, E3.
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute renewal of an agreement with the Gulf Bend Center related to an inter-local assistance agreement, which establishes a mental health peace officers task force, setting forth the terms and conditions for reimbursement to the city for its participation in the task force along with the services of the mental health peace officers and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we motion a second. Any questions or discussion?
I have one question. We're still with just one officer? Are we on the second one already?
Well, I actually have assigned the second one there. But yeah, this would cover funding for the second one.
For the second one? Okay, good, okay.
Things still going well? I know y'all have some meetings and.
Progress is being made. It's been productive. Um, we still got a long ways to go in terms of being able to serve that, uh, that population adequately. But, uh, uh, this is a step in a positive direction, yes.
Very good.
Not that the chief has any control over it, but we need an inpatient facility in this community for this reg, region. So, um.
It's probably the biggest gap.
It really is.
That I could identify in this region.
It's been that way for a while now.
Just a question. Is the population increasing then for this need?
I heard this morning that it, it, they've seen like a 5%, but they, they, the caveat is, that there, those are moving targets in terms of the numbers. But Gulf Bend did have a presentation this morning where they talked about since, uh, Hurricane Harvey, how they've seen an increase in, uh, services provided.
Okay. We'll hope it continues to work well. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, item passes.
Item E4 is a resolution awarding the North Heights Rehab Overlay Project Phase Four to Lester Contracting Incorporated for their low bid of $1,554,062.50, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for Mr. Reese? Really looks nice over there.
Thank you.
The part, if y'all haven't seen that area, it's really nice.
This, this is in the last street, is it?
No, sir.
Close.
There'll be, uh, in all, there's seven phases, so there's, uh, three more streets to do. I think so.
Trying to go through the rivers in my head.
Yeah. Six next year, I think.
We'll go all the way to, uh, Novasis will be the last one.
I'm sorry, Ms. Garrett, what do you?
No, I thought phase six next year and then phase seven and 20.
The utilities.
Utilities, okay. And then one more street. We'll follow that.
Right.
So it'll be 2021 before we're done with streets.
I think that's correct, yes, ma'am. Well, 2021, we should be done with utilities. And I think '22, we have one more rehab of Novasis.
It does look nice over there.
It does. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Item passes. We have one city manager report?
Yes, and April's going to talk, we've got parks appointments coming up, so she was just going to make you aware of that.
Yes, we just have, um, three appointments, um, that are up for either a reappointment or, or an appointment. Mr. Trahan and Mr. Hill, uh, currently serve on the Parks Commission and are eligible for reappointment and do desire that, if that's your desire to reappoint them. Uh, Ms. Kennison cannot be reappointed due to, uh, the bylaws stating, and she served two consecutive three-year terms. So this time we have several applications. And I think Danielle Williams with our Parks Department for helping me out with getting new applicants. So we have a total of eight applicants that are, um, vying for those positions as well as the two, um, that are asking to be reappointed. So there's several applications for your consideration. If you'll just look over those and we'll bring back a resolution next time, we'll have our voting system.
Okay.
So all the names will be listed for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Colby, you're popular. Everybody wants to be on that park.
Well, the Parks Commission will be updating their master plan. That's the project, start, I guess, in the fall. Um, we're almost into the fall, but coming up.